Good morning. We are going to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 4th public hearing and commissioners meeting.
Second of the motion.
Motion second. Are there any additions, corrections? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next up is a public comment regarding pending resolutions. Is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions. And Dan Becker from the engineers office is here. Good morning, Dan.
Morning. I've got two resolutions for consideration today. The first is approving change order number one for the Wall Road Bridge Number Three replacement. And the second is necessity to close River Corners Road for some roadside construction.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second of the motion.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good week.
Yep, you too. Thanks, Dan. Next up is Jeremy Cinco, Sanitary Engineer. Morning, Jeremy.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that's a resolution authorizing the sanitary engineer to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, for the design of Chippewa Lake, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
As motion second, any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Excuse me, Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is Human Resources' Holly Miran. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personnel changes resolution today, we have one new hire at Senior and Adult Services, one promotion in IT, three rate increases, one at Senior and Adult Services, one in sanitary, and one in planning, one transfer between agencies to sanitary, one leave of absence in sanitary, one return from leave at county home, and one resignation in sanitary.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Next up, Brett Thomas from Finance.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have eight resolutions, but they're pretty quick ones today. Our first one is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The first part of this is actually grant movements to refund us for a specialized docket grant for the juvenile court. Second one is just moving a little bit of money around for the LedSafe Ohio grant because the state gave us a late notice that they changed how they wanted the accounting done. So we have corrected that to meet their request. The second amendment, or the second resolution, eh, is a revenue adjustment for various funds. This is just distribution of the funds for the law library. Our third resolution is the transfer for the print shop revenue for the total of $2,733.54 for the month of October. Our fourth resolution is the gasoline rotary fund in the amount of $20,367.62, again, for the month of October. Our fifth resolution is accepting the application for a procurement card for Family First Council. We needed a credit card for them to meet some of the needs that they have recently. And our sixth resolution is the authorization for 6,800 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline. Ports Petroleum has again come in as our low bid with $1.95.5 per gallon. Seventh resolution is expenses for county officials. We only have one small one for the sheriff for the special needs population and adult autism spectrum disorder course in Elyria. And finally, our eighth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,142,146.56.
I'll make a motion to approve the eight resolutions.
Second of the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Brett. Next up is department updates, and Greg Brown is going to kick us off today. Morning, Greg.
Good morning. It's been a while since I've been here. County Home Census is 42 right now with three adult daycare. Staffing, we have two open positions at this point for resident care aides, one full-time position on second shift, one full-time position on third shift. And we still have open intermittent positions for aides and LPNs as well. We are currently advertising on Indeed for these positions. Maintenance projects that have been completed, we've removed the carpet and refinished the wood floors in the two front, two north offices, my office and the nursing supervisor. They look amazing. Ken McCayman from McCayman Hardwood Refinishing did the floors for us. Can't remember if it was done the last time or not, but I actually have a door that leads directly into my office now, which has not been there for 50 years because there was one there at one time and then was walled in, and now it's back. But you can now walk directly into my office versus having to walk through Amy's office. Environmental controls has just recently completed replacing all the sprinkler heads at the county home. Some of them, I think, were 50 years old, and I guess it was time. So we've done that. And also, we put some concealed heads down in the basement for a better look in between the dining room and the kitchen. Some of the upcoming projects, maintenance has been furiously, furiously rewiring the home, so we now have updated wiring for our computers and phones. Today, IT is coming to flip the switch and switch us all over. I used to have a big rack in my office that had all the wires, and that's now gone or will be here today. And they used the closet on our first floor then to put it in there. So my office will be streamlined again. Some of the donations that we've received, and to a special thank you, I'm this far back, the 4H Junior Livestock Auction happened. I missed that, being able to say that more timely. However, without a partridge in a pear tree, we had 17 turkeys, 36 chickens, 11 pigs, two steers, and four lambs. And those larger ones are due in part to, thank you so much, Commissioners, for that processing fee, paying for a portion of that for the swine and steer. This was the largest in the five years that I've been the superintendent. It was amazing. It was so abundant that, yes, I had to find other off-site locations to source some of this. And Armar was gracious enough to help me with that.
That's great. Great.
It was. It was really something. And this was the first year also that I, normally I don't stay for the entire thing, but I stayed, and that is a very, very long. Very long. It was, it was amazing. I did not realize how long that went.
It's a pretty fun 48-hour period.
Yeah.
That lasts for the better part of those 48 hours.
But now I realize that I just need to program that in because I will be doing that.
But at least it wasn't like 90 degrees and you're.
It was, and it was perfect. Very good weather for it. So you are correct. Some of the other donations, we had a Medina County resident from their farm. They donated like 12 to 36 dozen eggs. I can't remember the exact number. It was a lot. We've been, residents have really been enjoying the fresh eggs. Also, Feeding Medina County donated a pallet of eggs as well to the county home. Medina Presbyterian Church, every year they do a cornucopia collection two times. So in October, we had vegetables come in, and then the Monday before Thanksgiving, they'll bring their next one in. And it's not just randomly even asked me what we want. So it's not like I get a whole bunch of potatoes or just a bunch of apples. They're very specific in what they bring, and it's always appreciated. And then, over the weekend, I still haven't been able to track down exactly who did it, but trays of Santa Sousa food came in.
Wow.
Veal Parmesan, eggplant Parmesan, some other pasta, an anti-pasta, big trays. Residents ate really well. Still trying to track down that person, other than just going to Santa Sousa themselves. Some of the completed events, the fair, our activity coordinator has gone and started a network meeting where she brings in other activity coordinators, and then they talk about different ideas. And she's done that this year. It's really grown. And then next year, they're actually going to other locations. And this will only help the county home in dealing with the residents and giving them quality activities. October 1st, Senior Service Network did a bonfire in Smores. October 5th, the Clutters did their bonfire. October 16th, the residents always do early voting. The Board of Elections is always great with coming to our location. October 31st, the residents had their Halloween party. That even made it in the Commissioners' newsletter. And then upcoming events, November 19th through the 21st, Amy and I will be going to the Ohio County Home Association Conference. Every year, it's always good to catch up, see what other county homes are doing, issues, and then round tables and other events that we do. October 25th will be the new dining room ribbon cutting ceremony. November 25th, that will be coming to you. I've already put out some of the other ones for that and planning for that. November 27th will be when the residents get to eat for the first time in their new dining facility, and that'll be for Thanksgiving for the lunch.
Excellent.
December 3rd, the Clutter Christmas Party. December 10th, the residents will get their Christmas meal that's paid for by the Friends of Medina County Home. It's been corkscrew saloon for like the last, I think, three years. And what's not to love? It's delicious food. And then just the regular ones, bowling, access to arts, always there at least two times a month as well. And that's all I have.
Wow. Great. Good report.
Yeah, lots going on. Thanks for the update.
There is. All right. Thank you.
Questions?
Thanks, Snoop.
Thanks, Al. Great.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jody Robbins from the CVB.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What a year.
Yeah.
Can't believe it's my last report of 2025. Just a few things. Short report today. Tourism and stakeholder outreach. So on August 17th, the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau team, we attended Black Cat Stars Hollowfest. And I'm not sure if you saw any of the stats, but we had over 9,000 guests on the square, and 86% of them were from out of town.
I was there. It was unbelievable.
I know. We were just like, we didn't even know what to say to each other. It was just like.
It was unbelievable.
What was really cool is I ran into a high school friend, and it was, kind of hadn't seen her in probably 30 years. And I'm like, what are you doing here? She's like, what are you doing here? So that was, that was a stellar event. Black Cat continues to kind of knock it out of the park with that. We also were able to attend the Black Cat Cryptids event, too, that happened in September. So that was another good event. On August 18th, the CVB staff toured the new Celestia Theater that is still under renovation in Wadsworth. This new music venue will capitalize on the need for the county to have a larger concert and arts venue that isn't attached to any of our schools. So we have our performing arts centers, but this will be something that's standalone. So we're, we are very excited about it. Their kickoff season begins December of 2026, and we will be working closely with them promoting their concerts and events, both through social media and our monthly itineraries. In early September, the CVB was home base for the cast and crew for a film named Carousel. I'm sure that you heard all about that. Matt and I were very excited to meet some of the cast that is in the movie. That was really something. Matt and I had our final 2025 wrap-up with Sean at Hillendale. So we discussed how we were able to work with them this year for their tournament. We're going to be doing the same thing, if not a little bit more involved for their 2026 tournament. So Hillendale is a real asset to bringing visitors in. We had about 450 contestants that were staying. Some of them were camping, but some of them were staying for the better part of a week in our hotels. Ticken Teas of Central Ohio is a Model T group, and they held their 36th Annual All-Ohio Jamboree. And it was held in Wayne and Medina Counties this year. We helped to coordinate lunch for travelers at the Chatham General Store, which that, again, that store amazes me and what they do for tourism for the county, not only for the people that live here, but for tourists. They were able to put together about 50 lunches, and people were coming in and out all day. So we were able to get there, and Matt was able to snap some great photography. So that was a good event. Hoping that maybe next year they'll decide to stay in Medina. So that would be great. After a previous meeting with Manford of Main Street, Lindsay Hansen, the sales manager of the new Legacy Hotel, Bob Purdy of Blue Hotel in Akron, and Lisa Rao of autonomy Capital, we are scheduled for a mini fam tour tomorrow. They were all very interested in seeing what the county offers as far as attractions. And so we will be hitting Brunswick and Medina and showing them some of our attractions. We're all the way to Maple Side. We're going to go to Castle Noel, Suites and Geeks, bunch of places in between. So we kind of decided it was a good idea to do that, and it's going to be kind of a test drive to see how we can have those tours for some of our other leaders in the county as well. So if that's something you want to do in the future, let me know. We're going to move to our community partners. So the MCCV team celebrated 15th anniversary with Cool Beans in Medina. Laura and her staff's dedication to the city and now the county with the opening of Cool Beans in their store in Brunswick is an amazing asset for tourism. You can often see lines out the door for events. Many events and holidays, they, they make drinks not only marketable to visitors, but also a must-stop destination when people are here. And it's because of this that we chose, we're excited to announce that the CVB has chosen Cool Beans Medina for the cover of our 2026 guide. So we had our cover shoot. It was rescheduled three times due to roadwork and building updates. But we were able to complete it with 20 people, three dogs, a vintage Mustang, a perfect sunny day, and a lot of sweat. But it was well worth it. So I'm very excited to share that guide with you. That same day, we were able to attend the ribbon cutting for Hemingway's, which is a huge asset to our downtown area. In September, the MCCV team organized three regional stakeholder meetings. So what you have in front of you, that little one sheet, was kind of the gist of the information that we shared with them. We just wanted everybody to kind of be on the same page about what we have been working on, what we're going to continue to work on. We had one at Hemingway's on Tuesday, the 23rd. We had one at King Street Coffee in Wadsworth on Tuesday, the 23rd. And then on September 25th, we met in Brunswick at Market 42. We had over 50 tourism partners and business owners that were there. We were able to discuss what we've been working on, talk a little bit about initiatives for next year. It was really, really well received, and we decided that we're going to kind of alternate. So next year, we will have one big stakeholder meeting that everybody can attend. Matt and I attended the Medina Chambers Final State of the City for Mayor Dennis Handwell. It was an amazing tribute, and he's going to be very missed. So more of that stuff to come for him. Matt attended the Medina County Business Awards at the Blair Center in Westfield. It was very exciting that Castle Noel, one of our biggest attractions in the county, was honored for their Community Advocate Award for the Promise of Christmas that was held in January of this year. And we're also excited to announce that the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau received a Citation of Excellence Ruby Award that took place at the Ohio Conference on Travel. So for that same event. So it's nice to know that that is still being remembered as something that was a real accomplishment for the county. Main Street Medina had a new fundraising event called the Ghost Walk that brought authors, vendors, and opportunities for visitors and support to Main Street businesses. We were one of the sponsors for the event. We attended to assist with moving groups from one venue to the next, and Matt was able to get some great photography. The event was so popular that they actually had to hold two more mini-events because the amount of people that they could have at one event wasn't as much as the desire to do it. So, and I was also able to go to Main Street, which is night out, which is always a really good time. Scare on the Square, put on by Main Street, Wadsworth, and other businesses and families, that actually won Event of the Year this year at their Heritage Ohio Conference, which is amazing. The CVB was the sponsor for the activities that happened in Pocket Park. There were, there was a concert that happened for Joe Vitale Jr., and there was some magic that happened earlier in the day. And again, the stats on that, there were almost 15,000 people there. And again, attendance for that event, 86% were from out of town, and there were 11 different states that were represented there. So again, it's no wonder that that was the event of the year this year. The Medina County Parks had its ribbon cutting for the Shotwell Gardens at Lake Medina, and Matt and I were able to go to that. Another great asset to the parks and to our county. And I love that people that are coming in from Route 3 off of 71, that's going to be, that's a very visible park for them to see to kind of be like, yes, this is what our parks are about. Fall foliage tour was very successful. The weather was incredible this year. The hosts were very pleased with the turnout. CVB, we helped to distribute the maps, and then we set up for the event. So that was an adventure. I was able to make a couple of stops. I stopped at the Ladies of the Grand Army of the Republic, and all of their hosts there were dressed in Civil War. It was unbelievable. I actually talked to a family from Alliance. So I thought that was really kind of a testament to how far people come to do that. Just a quick thing, marketing and promotions. You can see the latest edition of Ohio Magazine. This is their November, December edition, and we were on the back cover of that. It's also chock full of things about Medina County. We have proof in there where we're highlighting some of our businesses in the county. There's an America 250 ad that we worked with the city of Medina to put in there to promote their events. So this is one of our favorite issues to be in. For the last few months since our last visit here, we are on the back cover of the programs for our Mako for 2026. So they continue to bring phenomenal arts programs to the county, and so we'll be on the back of that. We were in Crossings Canada for their fall/winter edition, kind of a big one for us. Every year, Ohio Magazine puts out a publication called Great Meetings, and it gives us an opportunity to highlight the meeting spaces that we have in the county, back to that convention part of things. We highlighted Westfield at the Blair Center in the end this year. That was kind of our focus of that promotion. And then we did the inserts that are in there, and we were also actually able to place a full-page ad in the Indiana Pacers 2025/2026 yearbook. So that was kind of a new thing that we tried. Social media, just wanted to give you a quick update. Matt's social media efforts have led the MCCV to almost 2 million views, which is pretty impressive. We have over 1,500 new followers in the past year, and we're gaining ground every day. Our visitor guide distribution, this is very exciting, we are down to four boxes. We have four boxes left. So that's how high in demand they were. Ad sales close in late November for our guide. We're very anxious to get that done and printed, and I will be reaching out for Commissioner quotes. We're actually doing three different regions, and so I'm going to ask you to do the Medina quote, you to do Brunswick, you to do Wadsworth. And so we'll be reaching out to you for those quotes. Just a few operational things. In 2026, Matt will actually be joining the CVB full-time, which is a huge bonus. Probably one of my best decisions for the organization so far. And our 2026 budget is completed. It was reviewed by the CV Board, and now will be passed off to the Economic Development Board tomorrow. So they're going to be, they're going to be okaying that. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you for.
You know, I really appreciate the things that happen outside of Medina. It's a countywide board, and so the Chatham inclusion and obviously the other cities, but, but the other townships is a great, great resource that's sometimes overlooked. So thanks.
Appreciate your work.
Great job.
Next up, we have a few Commissioners' resolutions today. The first one is reappointing a member to the Community Action Wayne Medina County's Board of Directors, and this is appointing Annie Finner T for continuing her service.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
And the next one is, I'm sorry, we need to vote on that, don't we?
Oh, yeah.
We will do the roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next up, we are approving the reappointment of the BE AP Area Inspector for the county for 2026. This is Michael Moan, who's done a great job. I think he was initially appointed in 2023 and desires to continue his service.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
Motion second, and I think we'll go ahead and vote. The roll call on this one, too, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next is appointing Susan Skornowski to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next is reappointing representatives to the Community Reinvestment Area, the CRA Housing Council, and Enterprise Zone Tax Incentive Review Councils. And this is reappointing the current members, Linda Bauer, Stacy Tremonte, and Sandy Newman.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. And we did just a number of those, but just to reflect, and there are a lot of those types of appointments we do this time of year. When folks have talents and they're willing to lend them to our various boards, we appreciate their service. So thank you to all those folks for their continued service. Next, we have a resolution denying the city of Brunswick's request for a waiver related to the Medina County Solid Waste District's flow control requirement under the current solid waste district plan. So we did have a special meeting on Monday to discuss this, and it was the consensus coming out of that meeting that we take action to deny this waiver. Essentially, I think for purposes of clearing, clearing our efforts to work towards a new plan, which we want to make sure we devote appropriate time to that activity. And there were just a lot of, a lot of hurdles to clear in this, this waiver request. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second of the motion.
Motion second. Is there any additional discussion?
I just want to point out, in addition to the reasons for the denial that are printed here, there are those that ought to be made part of public record. I know they came during testimony during our, when we were going through this, the waiver process and those public hearings. But I wanted to make it clear, number one, Brunswick did approve the current plan. They, in fact, their service director was adamant that the county needs to maintain its current flow control. His argument then, and continues to be, I think likewise reflected in reports from our consultant and evaluation, that because of flow control, there actually is a competitive market within Medina County. In fact, Curtis Perkins was here Monday, former waste hauler. Many people know him. But he made the comment about how the smaller haulers, the haulers that don't have landfills are able to compete on a, basically, on an even playing field with the big haulers that have, have landfills. So that's the one thing that has kept prices competitive within Medina County compared to other places. The tipping fee is lower here than it is in other, other areas. And so given those observations that I know that the city of Brunswick would, as well as Kimball, would like to eliminate flow control, there's a reason for why we have had it. But given that, the Technical Advisory Committee, which reviewed that and has made a recommendation in the new plan to consider additional waivers that may, that can consider Brunswick's unique position and what their, what the benefits might be to create a waiver for them. But that's the process that we have chosen to evaluate this waiver request. Brunswick Service Director chaired that committee. Kimball, who is advocating for the elimination of flow control and has a facility in Liverpool, likewise had a vote on that technical advisory committee. So they've had input to this whole process. And as I mentioned on Monday, it was premature for Brunswick to ask for us the waiver under the current plan because our new plan has taken, has dutifully taken, taken into consideration their concerns, what the opportunities might be in the process to follow. And that is through the Technical Advisor Committee, our consultant, and the Policy Committee. We're evaluating all those options, and we'll be coming up with a plan that includes consideration of those concerns. So that's certainly another reason to, to vote to not grant the waiver under the current plan.
Yeah, I think that, I think that structural advantage of the new, the new plan, the future plan is kind of, kind of factoring in some of these things that we've learned throughout this process. And thanks to the, the input of the Technical Advisory Committee, I think the planning group is going to start maybe a little bit of a head start down that path. So. But be that as it may, that, that process needs to get going, and I think taking this action allows that, that planning process to move forward. So. Absolutely. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it's already been said by Steve, but this is a rejection of the waiver under the current plan. So, again, a little premature, so.
Very good. With that, we'll call the roll.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to discussion session. Debbie, would you like to kick us off for discussion session? I know you're here to give us a little bit of an update on matters with JFS and SNAP benefits, and I think that's maybe a good place to start if, if you're prepared.
And also our 2026 budget.
Yes.
The impact from, yeah, okay.
So I had, I had.
Good morning.
First.
Morning. I had shared with Matt and Brett some of our concerns from a child protective perspective. It was in probably late July, I think, was the email that I sent to them, talking about our placement costs and placement costs specifically surrounding those children that are in residential facilities. So it's facilities that are behavioral health or medical facilities. So it's not a traditional foster home. So it's typically locked facilities, or it's like a group home where the children can come and go, to a certain extent with permission, but it's not a locked facility. So those, those entities are becoming immensely expensive. And I did a quick timeline with Matt and Brett, and I'll just summarize it with, with you guys here. But in 2021, we spent about 1.8 million on treatment facilities, and we had about 110 children in care, and 26 of them were in these treatment facilities. In 2022, that dollar increased about 16%, but that was also when we had 150 children in care, and we had 31 in residential facilities. So it's an interesting that the, that the increase was 16%, but the number of children that were in the facility rose by 19%. So it was like, okay, that, that number makes sense to me. In 2023, it jumped 47%, and we had 140 children in care, but only 25 in those residential facilities. 2024, it was a 39% increase, and this is year after year. It's not combined. It's not combined. We had 100 children in care and 20 in a residential facility. So even though we have less children in facilities, the cost of care is still going up. Part of that, I'm sure, is in Trump's first administration, under the Family Services Prevention Act, he and the federal legislator had demanded that these treatment facilities, and I can appreciate why it was done, come under stricter standards of care for children in facilities. Well, when all those standards of care from a cost of doing business came out in 2023, because they had, they had a certain amount of years to comply, I think, I've not asked them directly, but they're saying that, 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 I have to believe that their cost of care is increasing, so I have to pass it on to counties. This is not unique to Medina. I think I had last reported to you all a couple months ago that Summit County's director had reported that their cost of care for children in facilities is going to, is going to bypass their payroll of 350 staff members. So it's just happening statewide. So that, that is a significant expense that is absolutely out of our control. We don't want to put children in treatment facilities. Go ahead.
Do we have any hope that there will be more facilities opened and certified so that the cost would be more competitive or not be going up 20, 30, 40% a year?
Yeah, that would be, that would be ideal. I don't know that there, it's, it's got to be a tough business because it's run 24/7. You have to have people there all the time, and they need to be mental health providers or some sort of treatment.
And their state license, correct?
Right.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying. Do we have any hope that any more are going to get certified in the near future?
I think there has to be the, the desire for people to get certified or desire for organizations to get certified. One thing that was happened in the, the state budget is that directors, including myself, had sat in on a committee that said, this has to stop. This can't keep increasing like this. So what the director went to for DCY has, is working with the governor to do a rate card where all these facilities have to say, you must tell me how much this costs, like you need to itemize it out. That's not going to happen immediately. I'm glad it's out there. I'm glad it's happening, but I bet that process will take probably two years to, to come to fruition. So we are, I, I have to applaud staff. You know, we, we never want to put children in these treatment facilities. It is, it is not, it could be ideal care if they have that level of need, but we are not a county that's like, you just go into a treatment facility. If I can put you in a treatment foster home where it's one parent, two parents, three parents, whatever, and they are highly certified, so they can be, they can receive a trauma-informed care, that they can provide better needs and better treatment for our higher acuity children, that's where we're going to put them. But even those providers are limited. We are seeing more children with substance use disorder, more children with sexual abuse, not only being the victim, but also the alleged perpetrator. So some of the behaviors that we're seeing are becoming far more significant than what we've seen before. So it's, it's for the safety of not only the child, but also the public, some of these children cannot be in a treatment foster home, especially if that treatment foster home has other children, and this is potentially an alleged sexual perpetrator. They can't go there.
So what are you projecting for next year, for the budget?
We were projecting, I shared with Matt and Brett, that we would probably have a deficit of about 1.3 million.
As currently funded?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a 2025, so you'll basically need a bump of 1.3.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And that, when I say I'm going to applaud staff, we've had record numbers of adoptions. We had seven adoptions, I think in 2024. I have those numbers somewhere. I think it's actually 2025, we had seven adoptions. So that is not only permanency for those children, but it's also reducing the cost of, of our care.
Since this is statewide, at this point, under the current biennial budget, the state's not doing any pickup on any of this.
No. They've given us small increases, but they are not enough to keep pace with what's happening with these facilities. We also had a decent amount of COVID dollars over the course of years, 2021, 2022, even some leftover from 2023, but obviously that is all gone. So the cash carryover is.
So basically, the shift of the cost is on the county?
Correct.
Our general fund?
Correct.
All right.
Yes. From the SNAP side of the House. In July, I didn't know all this. Then come the one big beautiful bill, HR1. The feds have reduced their contribution of the administrative expenses for SNAP programs throughout the states. Currently, the feds pay 50% of those administrative cuts, not the benefits, but just the ability to issue those, and then the states pay the other 50%. This bill is now shifting in federal fiscal year '27, so basically October of 2026. It's shifting it to 25%, and the states have to pick up the other 70, the other 25%. So it's going to be 75, 25 for the feds. The state is estimating for themselves and for counties, like the total, to be about $65 million cost deficit that they won't have from the federal government. ODJFS Director Matt Damshroder has gone to the legislators, saying you need to make counties whole so they don't have to incur this expense, and it's not an expense just for federal fiscal year '27, it's '28 and '29 until that law changes, until that percentage changes. So he's, he has made that effort. We haven't heard anything from the, we've heard some from the state, but nothing that says that counties are going to be made whole. Don't worry about it.
Right.
So when Steve and I put numbers together, we are estimating that our deficit, if the state doesn't make us whole, for the administrative expense will be about $685,000. Now, that doesn't start until October of '26, so that would be about $171,000 for, for our office, October, November, December. In 2027, it would be about the balance of $513,000 would be the change, but then year after year, presuming $685,000 stays the static number, it's going to be that expense over and over and over again.
So it's timed, it's timed actually with the biennial budget at the state, which is July 1.
When they say administrative.
It's timed to the federal budget.
Correct.
Oh, to the federal budget?
Yes.
Sober?
Yes.
So, when they say administrative costs, are they making any recommendations, you know, at the state level or anything about streamlining, like, you know, more high-tech things that would streamline your administrative costs? Any recommendations in that area?
Yeah, they have a significant amount of what they call bots, robots, that are going into the Ohio Benefit System. That's the system we use to issue SNAP, Medicaid, all of our public assistance benefits, and those bots are going in and updating cases if somebody has a baby, if somebody changes their shelter costs, just all sorts of different things that happen throughout the course of a case. That bot is going in there and making those updates, but it's only as smart as the bot can be. So some of those cases will fall out, and we get a list of cases like, hey, we tried to do the work on this case, but now you have to do it. They are, let me, let me jump to this topic about the error rates.
Yeah. Because does that contribute to our, if their bots make an error, we own it?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes. Yeah. So part of what they're trying to use is AI to go in, and we're starting to get the lists already, go in, and it's looking at, every time we, we work a case, we have to do a journal note. Debbie called, and she moved, her rent is now $450, and then we have to redetermine somebody's benefit. We have to type all that in a journal note. So what the AI machine is doing is going through selective cases, reading all those journal notes, and then comparing the activity in Ohio Benefits, like, what I think you should have done, did you do it? And if those cases look like they might be wrong, the list is coming to the county to fix them. I think over the probably couple hundred cases that it reviewed for Medina County, this was last month, I think there were 15 on our list, so I think, and, and that's not to say that all of them are wrong, it was just like, you need to look at these and make sure it was done okay. The reason why they're doing that is in federal fiscal year '28, so another interesting timeline. If the state doesn't have an error rate less than 6%, they will be financially responsible on a tiered basis for however many benefits, which I think is $3.2 billion last year, of, of, of that, of that amount that you've issued, if you're over 6%, you're going to have a penalty. If you're over 6% to 9%, your penalty is higher. Higher than 9%, your penalty is higher. It's 5, 10, and 15%. Currently, we're at 6.85. The whole state of Ohio is at 6.85, so part of this bot is doing that. They're doing QC reviews before the, the state has to pull it and send it to the feds, so there is all sorts of plates in the air, if you will, trying to get our error rate down, because it's state of Ohio. Even if Medina has zero errors on all the cases that are reviewed by the state of Ohio, it doesn't matter, that, that the entire state will be penalized, and that will trickle down.
So who pays for the penalty then?
State of Ohio, and if it's not the state of Ohio, they might.
That's been, that's yet to be determined, right? That was my understanding.
Correct. So those are two things that are like, we don't know what the state of Ohio is doing.
They've got to respond to whatever that cost would be, and if recent activities any indication. It'll be us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I believe for federal fiscal year '28, there will be a new governor, so I'm not sure what that will look like.
Right.
So we are indeed in interesting times.
Be a new General Assembly, too. So, yeah.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay.
So I guess my plea to you would certainly be with CCAO is to share, share with them. I, I know JFS Directors Association is sharing all sorts of stuff with CCAO, but if, if you could support the legislature, at least for the SNAP piece, to, to make us whole.
They've been working on, that's been a priority, I know, throughout the year. Well, it, it provides us additional insight here as we start talking about inside millage budget for next year and what's going down now at the General Assembly. Right. With the various bills, like, you know, House Bill 335. Right. So, yeah. Okay. That's great. I don't know what else to say.
Yes, I know.
But with the immediacy, with the, with the shutdown ending, some of the catastrophe, the immediate catastrophe with SNAP has been averted with some help over the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think the House is voting today.
Yeah, yeah, the House is supposed to vote today. I think Monday, when USDA came through and said you need to issue partial benefits, the state of Ohio immediately jumped on it and started issuing those benefits regardless of what SCOTUS came through and said, now you have to pause it. It was kind of like, too late, they're already out there.
Right.
So partial benefits are going to start being loaded today on people's card, and it'll be staggered today, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because that's how benefits are authorized anyway, based on the date you were approved. You, you are, your benefits load on the first, or the second, or the third, so on and so on. So there will be some relief forthcoming, and food banks got, I think, a significant amount of money. I think it was close to $7 million, so.
Yeah.
And I know our food bank, I sat down with them, and Sharon Ray, Representative Ray, thank you very much for putting all that together to help fundraise for our county.
No, and, yeah, I think that was an unfortunate exercise, but it also kind of shows how we can kind of come together as a community.
And mobilize, yes.
Yeah, because that was, your, your effort in that, I know, was kind of balancing unnecessary alarm with appropriate alarm and, and all those steps, so thank you for all of your leadership in that, too.
Sure.
So, anything else? No?
Okay. The, the child support, do you, do you?
Sure. Give us, give us.
Yeah, yeah, let's load it on.
Let's hear that, too.
Is this, is this the good news part of the update?
No.
I don't think she was here to do the good.
Good, because it's less. This is actually still a, a struggle, but it's a, a less complicated story. Child support has been flat-funded ever since I was a director, so that's been for five years, and it's my understanding even decades before that. Costs continue to go up, so we have expenses that go up beyond payroll, just papers, stamps, everything. And that, that cash flow that we've been able to carry over year after year after year, especially after the COVID dollars were dissipated, child support is at a deficit between, I'll call it $350,000 and $380,000. And these numbers are, and Steve can, can talk to this if you want more details, there's, there's always such a fluctuation with these dollars that I present you, because we, we get federal funding that requires a match from the county if the state doesn't pick it up, or if the child qualifies under something called 4E, we get a bigger reimbursement for that. So there is a shell game that gets played fiscally, that it's hard for me to come in and say exactly this dollar amount, but it's at least a, a, I'm painting with a broad, but hopefully accurate brush about what we need.
You're fairly high confidence between 350 and 380, is what you're basically saying.
Yes.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And these are the, the headwinds, I mean, just, you know, as we're talking about budgeting, these are the headwinds we're dealing with on the JFS front. There are other areas where, where we've got similar things, not certainly, thankfully, not these kinds of dollar amounts, but when we look to our other department heads and directors and elected officials and talk about budgeting next year, in the backdrop of trying to do something on inside millage, we need to have these numbers in mind, because, you know, when we're talking about a reduction of the inside millage that we are otherwise able to collect, we still have to fill these gaps before we make any. Well, I think the pattern is fairly, fairly clear and consistent, the shifting of costs to the local government. Right. The county government's bearing more and more of the cost of these programs. Right.
And, and, and not to, to be a martyr, but especially in our child protective, but also in public assistance, we can't say no.
Yeah.
If they come in, if they came to us, come to us, I can't say, no, you can't buy this car today, I don't have any parts available. I have to say yes.
Right. And these, these new dollars that we're talking about would have roughly been, roughly been offset by, if we, if we didn't do anything with inside millage, you know, they, they would have approximately canceled that, right? Is there about a $3 million number?
So we had about $3 million just in July.
He needs the mic.
Oh, yeah. Miles is getting it.
Sorry.
Thanks, Miles.
Thank you. So we had about 3.5 million coming in from inside millage, and I'll emphasize, that was our increase that I'm looking at for budgeting countywide for 2026. We don't have increases on any of our other revenue lines. In fact, I'm anticipating that several of them will have minor decreases. So when you look at that inside millage, we had 3.5, but right here, as of July, Debbie was way ahead of the game. She knew what was going on. She informed Matt and I. We're looking at the idea of 1.8 needing to be soaked up immediately in shortfall that didn't exist prior. This is all new dollar commitment that we have to come up with, because the feds or the state have not been able to carry the continued costs or have, have started to push that down to the local government side.
And so the, the, the challenges that have been identified in the budget memorandum and everything that's been circulated, this is why there are going to be other sacrifices that are going to have to be made elsewhere, because we've, we need to absorb these costs in a, in an environment where we are also looking to roll back inside millage. So that, that's the challenge, I think, that we're faced with, is we don't have an alternative other than, you know, tolerating the expense, so we need to find a way to absorb the, the cuts elsewhere.
Well, I think balance that against what's going on at the state level, the General Assembly, as to the certainty of that growth of the inside millage. That goes to the question, I guess, and, and so Bill, House Bill 335, as I understand, the, the Auditors Association has testified in favor of the bill that's as written, which includes the provision that, that, that once inside millage is rolled back, that basically requires the Budget Commission to authorize it, but also they're advocating for an emergency clause. And I am, it's uncertain to me that if there's an emergency clause, how does that affect our predicted inside millage for next year? Because it would take effect immediately upon signature of the governor, which would, and right now, they're talking about, basically within the next two weeks, they would like and right now, they're talking about, basically within the next two weeks, they would like to get this bill out and on the floor, and if it is not amended accordingly, if they get an emergency, emergency clause added to the legislation, it would just upon the signature of the governor, which would make it within November. So how would that affect...
Uh, there's gonna be discussions at the auditor, oh, sorry.
Auditor's conference? Okay.
Yeah, there'll be, next week is the auditor's conference, so we'll be, you know... Next week is the auditor's conference.
Got it, okay.
So there's gonna be a lot of discussion then, so I can kind of fill you guys in at, at that point on, on what the discussion is and what the direction is.
And if the emergency clause is in there, I guess theoretically, we would not see, we'd see the 3%, or we'd, we'd see the...
Yes.
Inflation factor, which means a whole lot less than that. Certainly wouldn't even be enough to cover, uh...
Right.
Cover your, your needs, your increased needs. So I guess that's, that remains to be seen, I guess, and I guess today's testimony from, of opponents, as I understand, in committee this afternoon.
Yeah. On another note, the homestead provision of grandfathering homestead people, and the governor's expected to sign on Tuesday. That's Tuesday, so...
Good, good. Well, that helps. Administratively, it's, it's the Auditers' Office, for sure.
But the 335, I mean, we've already seen some counties who had taken action to roll back.
And reversed champagne.
Yeah, because of the uncertainty of it. So again, the law of unintended consequences in these things is, there's a ripple effect at every level.
Yeah, we got a board meeting Friday, we'll be talking more about it, probably get an update from some of the counties that already had passed it, whether they're going to change their mind.
And honestly, if it weren't for that uncertainty, you know, the, the conversations we had leading up to this were, we're gonna find a way to do, to do that at some level, but the uncertainty that comes with it, because we, we've talked previously, when we kind of kicked off the discussion about, about options for tax relief, this was front of mind, thanks to Debbie's work, we, we knew about some of these costs. So I think there's a scenario where we can absorb these costs and still make concessions that, that benefit taxpayers, but if the implications of that are longer term than what we were led to believe they were, it, it's very difficult to do that, to your point, in a world where more and more costs are getting passed, you know, from the feds to the state, and then eventually back down to us. So, so this is all very helpful as we consider those things, so I appreciate your time today.
Sure. And at least as far as SNAP goes, it's a good thing that the government's likely to be open today, hopefully.
Yes, correct, correct. And it might take some time for the, the balance of benefits to get out to people, but I'm hopeful, I'm grateful that the state moved so quickly on that, on that ruling, and that they can issue at least partial benefits. I think it's gonna be like 65% of, of what they'll receive.
That's good.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna hold on to that, because I'm sure we'll need it again.
Laura, did you have anything for discussion today? Please.
Just a couple of things quickly to, to add on to what Debbie reported. We have a contract for Adult Protective Services at Senior Adult Services, which is, you know, contracted from JFS, and I said to Debbie, before she came up here, do you have, you know, any word on APS? She's like, that's not even on my radar, which, it's a small program, and I get it, and part of the reason that we have the contract is because it is on, on our radar. There's a set amount from the state, I believe, is $80,000 a year that we get, that the, you know, pass through to us for Adult Protective Services, services. With that $80,000, we have three full-time employees, so you can imagine how much funding that that uses at the local level, although there is other funding that Steve has allowed us to tap into from the state. But we have two full-time workers, and then I have a supervisor that's half administrative and half worker, a working supervisor, and it's not enough. We've had about 10% to 15% increase in Adult Protective Services cases, so on our budget next year, as a little preview, we will be looking at the possible addition, it will be in the budget for another full-time Adult Protective Services worker. Depending on what their insurance options may be, that's another $80,000 to $100,000 now. The good news for you three commissioners for the board is that we do have a little bit of a reserve, so I do have some local levy funds that I will be able to, I mean, but as you know, the more you use it, the less you're gonna have. I mean, we're using more and more of that every year, so for the next couple few years, it'll be fine, but that, that money is fixed, and it doesn't go up on the ballot again till the November 28th. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, actually, you referenced about the levy funds, and that kind of goes into our tax relief we've already done with the piggyback on homestead exemption.
Right.
Does have an impact on the levy funds.
Correct.
What was the total, do you happen to remember what the total was?
Yeah, $75,000 for the human services levy.
Total?
Reduction, total reduction.
Total, I thought it was more than that, but okay, all right. And then we've, we've kind of...
We'll take that. You thought it was more.
Well, okay, well, I'm not, that's, that's good. But I guess what we have, we, we have kind of committed that we would backfill those levies when we do the piggyback on the homestead exemption, especially for the human services, the county home if needed, McDAC if it's needed as well. And I know we're definitely have assured the Career Center that we're going to also replace that levy loss. So that just adds more, a lot more...
Yeah.
To that impact, yeah.
Absolutely. The one, I'll end on a high note, so I have that. But the Medina County Senior Adult Foundation has responded to the delay and the reduction of SNAP benefits by allowing a spend of $25,000 to prepare food bags with food-only gift cards in them. We will have those ready, I've been working with Sarah, I'll get the word out in the Gazette hopefully by the end of the week. We will have those ready by midweek next week, and they'll be available in Brunswick, Medina, and Wadsworth. So it's great. I, I tell everybody, it's kind of like jumping back into COVID, what can we do right now, you know, to get food in people's hands? So everybody's done a great job, staff's very supportive, as are the advisory board and the foundation, so we're excited to get that going, and when the flyers get ready, I'll make sure they're available for everyone.
Great. Appreciate the updates.
Great.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Brett, did you have anything else for discussion? Matt? John? Okay. Colleen?
No.
Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to bring up, and I asked Rhonda to put it back in the package, the consideration of the emergency housing shelter for 2026. I'd like to advocate that we come to a decision fairly quickly, the, whether we can support it for, for next year, as they're working through their next year's budget. I know normally, we just do, you know, we were gonna do budget, budget hearings later after the first of the year. This is something that I, I think, I would, I would, I'm advocating that we, we do at least find a mechanism, and, and if you will, if you will promise that we will be funding it for that additional $100,000 for, for next year, knowing that the state has not, does have no, does not have any funding for the new shelters, and this is considered a new shelter. This, I know the municipalities are, have been challenging, Medina's made a commitment, Brunswick is considering, and Wadsworth likewise. And I thought, but I hope that we, as the board, could come up and make a commitment of $100,000 for next year. And I know the mechanism could be through the, as I understand, talking with Brett and Matt, potentially the temporary budget when we do it, we just basically will have that in there and assurances that it will be funded.